Welcome to our monthly meeting. We're here to accomplish the business of school for the sake of our students. We do want to hear from our citizens. There is time for public comment prior to action items on the agenda. We ask speakers identify themselves and their home district. We also ask to keep your comments to three minutes in order to provide equity to all speakers and to ensure our meeting is reasonable in length. If you have more than, more information that can be summarized in three minutes, please provide leave behind materials for the boards review. The moderator will ask you to conclude your remarks as time has elapsed. If you have questions during this session, you may ask for clarification from a school board member or a school administrator after the meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda this evening?
So moved.
We have a motion, Mr. Grove, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bynum. Any comment? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? So the first thing on our agenda is to recognize retirees from last school year. Last school year.
That's right.
Shall we?
Yes.
Impressive school year.
Not this, not what we did last, last month with this year's.
Last year, we were unable to recognize our 2020 retirees due to our emergency ordinance. So we could only, you know, we had to put it off until this year, so.
We should probably come around.
We'll come around.
I work on this for our brand. Friends retired after 18 years of serving service as a secretary of rep. county school. The rest of them sound like they're.
She's not here.
Not here.
This one is for Tom Pendleton retiring after 18 years of serving service as a bus driver for rep. county school.
Wow.
Thank you for all this great service.
Thank you, Tom.
Joyce Ward, that is retiring after 22 years of serving service as a teacher at county.
All right. Geraldine Bailey.
Yes, he did.
Geraldine Bailey is retiring after 30 years of just taking service as a teacher for rep. county school.
Yes, so the dish in, I'm gonna take this opportunity to hear me because we have a special award for Geraldine. The Golden Apple Award is given to retirees from rep. county schools to event the milestone of 30 or more years of service. He's dedicated teachers to service and has a better part of their lives. She has found the happiness of retirement and expectation. All while creating all the learning students of all abilities and backgrounds. The first in the apple of Golden Apple Award is Mrs. Maddondell in 2018. We will honor our retirees for this tradition here in Florida. So we are pleased to report not only our official, but our other retiring of Geraldine Bailey could also work in Golden Apple.
Paul Roll, Dixie Dodson. After 39 years of service as the biggest care professional for rep. county schools. Dixie Dodson, 39 years. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you all. And congratulations on your retirement. I'm envious. How'd you do that? Pull that off. All right, do we have our report from our student liaison? Is it a hyperlink?
It is, it's a video.
Video.
Go ahead and play that, hopefully we can hear it okay. There it goes. I'm gonna have to reload it. There she is.
If you can hear everybody, unfortunately I'm the important person because I'm just in some commitments, but I'm still very, very happy to be with you on video. Um, so thanks a lot. School is finally over. Everybody is very excited for what we're doing, not just the students, but the teachers are pretty happy about that too, and everybody else is. And I just, there's not a lot of reports that school is ending. We don't have any more school activities really happening. But I did want to give kind of like, end of the year, round out a lot of the report on how we ended. So we had all our big events, like the Luwau graduation, the senior prom. Those all went off without a hitch and they were only possible by all the help from the community we were able to get and from administration and teachers and from everybody coming together to make this possible and to let us go out with faith, kind of thing. So, um, a ton of thank you letters that was sent out recently, so that's really great. And then we had our final of the school. And during the week, the seniors, the junior high group, which includes stuff like camp got moved on, and then they were all parked. Are you not really talking on one of the days, like a skew and then off the curb and in the ditch, kind of thing? And then they did a ton of little senior things, sprinkled all throughout the rest of the week. Oh, and then on the last day, everybody was obviously watching their movies and playing their games and they've been doing all the, all week, kind of thing. Um, but we were also able to have our awards ceremony, um, slash meeting, kind of thing, to acknowledge the students and how much work they put into, um, this crazy COVID year that we've been having, and the effort that they each put into all the classes. There was, there's some scholarship stuff given out, uh, and there's tons of things that people have done not obviously. Now, we're also able to have parents and our teachers who have given so much service to educate all of us, uh, who are now retiring, who will be up to the next stages in their life, either retiring officially or going on to different education or travel or whatever and anything. Um, so we're really happy to be able to acknowledge those people and everything that they've done. Um, and then when the last bell rang, the last day, everything went to curriculums, which was amazing. Um, pretty much everybody filled up the hallways, people gathered with their friends outside, parking lot and everyone else. Um, the juniors, the seniors and everybody else who attended, and any guests who attended the lab, were up to their office to get their prizes from the side. Um, who's getting their prizes right now, but they did that the entire, um, so the office was at the main entrance area, slowly got globalized, um, teach, uh, some teachers were playing music and then everybody else was playing music on their speakers. And then we had a lot of teachers come out in these little suits, like a big cheap dress type of clothing, those things. So that just added to the chaos. I think that was a fantastic way for our last day to end. And then other than that, we just, we have summer school that's happening right now, just started up. Um, always good to see healthy remediation. And I think that we have done an excellent job at doing well for COVID this year. We, we've been through so much, the hybrid and then the, the all coming in of the days, and then people working with HDP virtual and same state with same protocol and everything. And I think we have done an amazing job at sticking with all of that. And to be honest, I really want to thank all, all the students who, who all worked really, really hard to make it through, to create some, to adapt to the changes. And we want to thank all the teachers who did the same for us, who they did actually do meetings and they, they made sure that they, you know, clearly the virtual students as much as possible into their classes and didn't just, you know, leave them on their own self-teacher. Like, they, they tried really hard to teach those kids too, even though they were so far away and poor and everything. Um, and then they adapted all their lessons and lessons to make it through that. Then when more of us came, they adapted again. There's been a lot of adapting to the situation and our teachers have done very well. Making up administration for making sure that everybody has their own book that needs money back. Teachers have their own supply of things. Every, everybody has what they need to get the job done. I just wanted to, to make everybody, teachers, students, administration, the, the community who's helped us do this entire year and make it as good as possible. So that's the end of my, like I say, we all have a lovely evening and thank you for what's possible.
Good, so, what an extraordinary young lady. You know, it's, it's good to be reminded of her perspective.
Yes.
And, and how she encapsulated the year, yeah, and, and the struggle. It's good, it's really good. She's a real winner. Great, let's move on to donations and clerk.
Um, the Unitarian, whoever's bullet, the Blue Red donated $100 for positive senior weed rattle. Chucky Jenkins donated $1,000 to the Voice Basketball Liberty Team camp. Melvin Haggins donated $100 to the Voice Basketball camp. The following donations from, for the sad prom event. B and B Signal, $500. Rapid and Electric Cooperative, $500. The Blue Rock Inn, $25. Settle Company, $100. Valley Eye Clinic, $50. Sheeney and Warranten donated $100. Catherine Reinhold, $200. And Walker Jones donated $250.
Thank you very much. We will accept donations with letter of thanks during consent agenda. Zero motion to adopt the minutes of May 11th and May 25th. We have a motion from Ms. Bynum, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Grove. Uh, any comments, any changes? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? And the motion carries. Mr. Grove, have you had opportunity to review the bills?
I have, and everything looks to be in order. We're doing quite well, actually.
Good, we, um, so the, the fiscal year of the school runs through June 30th, uh, which means the bills for fiscal year run through August, September. The bills still come in, so it's, uh, we have to be careful, you know, closing the books up, what the final number is. And we don't really know what that final number is until all the bills come in, but.
But we'll be in the black.
We'll be, yeah, we will be returning, we just don't know how much, to the, to the county. A lot of people retiring. I mean, you can imagine, people that worked here a long time and they're retiring and they've saved up, you know, this, this bank of leave that gets paid out. And if that happens times 10, you know, things, things happen in the school budget that have, we have to find room for them to occur at the end of the school year and they're, and they're not always known at the beginning of the school year, you can imagine. So, anyway, it sounds like we'll still be returning something, we just don't know what it is yet. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion, Mr. Grove, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bynum. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? And so ordered, reports to the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the first report that we have is from Family Futures. So I'm gonna ask at this time for Ann Yeoman, their executive director, to come to the podium. Now, you'll probably have to get pretty close to that mic or even hold it.
Is this close enough?
There you go.
All right. So I did a few slides and I have copies if anybody wants to take them home with them for, like, reading. Um, so like everybody else, COVID, of course, that, that things didn't go quite the way we thought it would. Uh, neither last semester when we had our first, I mean, last year when we had our first cohort of students, nor this year, this school year, when we had our second cohort of students. But, um, I think it's fair to say that what has happened with the My Future Accounts and the programming that goes along with that is a pretty bright spot in a dismal year, a really challenging year. So I do have to say that the success that we've had is largely due to the creativity and energy of Jenny Kapsa, who's the financial education coordinator. And then Lacey Jenkins that we brought in this year to assist her, particularly with the camp, but also with, um, activities actually of the schools. And then, of course, our staunch supporters like Ed Waters and some other foundations, as well as 40-some individuals in the community. So, little highlights here. So for the savings account, I'm gonna, this way so I'm, know what I'm talking about. Um, we, we've opened a total, over the two cohorts, we've opened a total of 128 accounts. We currently have about 114 active accounts. So there's a fair, there's some backing and forthing and moving in and out of the system and that sort of thing. Some new first graders that weren't in the cohort, the kindergarten cohort the year before, little, excuse me, little bit of backing and forthing there. But the most recent information that Jenny has given us is that about 86% of the active students have actually made their 100% of their incentives. And just to remind you, um, the way this works is when we open the accounts, we see them with $100. And then every year after that, the students can earn up to another $100 by completing tasks in school that are related to financial education, but also to developing personal skills, making judgments, priorities, that sort of thing. Those dimensions will become more important as the kids get older. So right now, we have almost $30,000 in those accounts.
Amazing.
So we're basically spending all your money. And that was an average there. But again, we do have some number of students that have not completed, either because they left or particularly the students who remained or not have been harder to get to. Okay. So, this is a little out of season, but it's a good example. In the Wednesday camp and in school, Lacey and Jenny worked together to make sure that our Ks and Ones, you know, continued to have, didn't miss out on any of the kind of activities. One of the things that they did specifically in the Wednesday camp was to talk with the kids about not only money, but buying and selling and this sort of thing. So Yasmin got so excited about this, she decided to make her own money. So, uh, she has many denominations. I think the $5 bill has a snowman on it. And she set up a little store at home and according to her mother, she made $100 selling stuff at home. So, I think we have to say, this kid got it, right? And so did many of the other students, but this, you know, is a nice, nice little example. The, the coaching, this, we also did for the camp counselors, um, some small matching deposits. If the camp counselor gave us documentation that they had a savings account, of most cases custodial with their parents, but they had a savings account and they deposited part of their stipend from the camp, we, we put in an additional $25 for each of them. And the idea there is they make a choice, they do something smart with the money, they, they get rewarded. Now, they may take it out the next day, but I don't think that really necessarily means you don't reward the behavior. It's part of a learning process. And I've got about eight or so requests this semester that we'll be paying next week. The six-month coaching clients refers to our having a relationship with CCLC and the Benevolent Fund in particular, that we're referring people to us who are having special difficulties partly largely due to COVID, but not always. Um, and then the last piece here, and I'm gonna talk more in detail, is the first wave of the evaluation, which we did last fall. I'm just, immediate past fall. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, I will talk at that. So these are just a couple of things that parents have said. And the first one I, I included because it specifically mentions, new to the county, this is a great program. And we've talked about retaining students and attracting students to the schools and we, we hope that they can make a contribution to that. Um, and we have had a number of complimentary comments from parents. The second one I gave is because it really wraps together, um, we're doing. So, this, the kid was actually a rising first grader when this happened. So when this kid goes shopping with his mother, according to her, he wants to know what everything costs and comparing the costs and all that. So, you know, I think that's good. You know, that's what we can expect from these kids. Thank you. And then sometimes what the students say. Yeah. And I'm, their answers, when, a lot of what we do with them is not just about counting coins and whatever, it's about envisioning the future. And that's a big underlying piece of this that's probably more important than the actual dollars, to get the kids not only thinking, oh, what do I want to be when I grow up? But to also try to begin to get them to say, the choices that they make will make a difference in whether or not they can achieve their goal. And so, these are just a couple of things from these kids. I'd like to save my money so I can save for something bigger, but I don't have the money for today to buy right now. So I think Paisley got it.
Doesn't it?
She got it. Can, will she still think that when she's a teenager? We're not sure. But then we also, sometimes when we say to the kids, what do you want to be when you grow up and what will you do with your money and that sort of thing? We get crazy answers like, I want to be an alligator catcher. Lots of artists, things like that. But we also get some pretty serious kinds of things. Kids will say, I, if I have money, I'd give it to my mom to buy groceries. Or I want to buy a house. Or one kid wants to buy a bank, right? This is good. But, this one is really, I thought was an interesting one. I'll save my money so I can adopt a kid one day and buy a house and get a job. And I think we underestimate how aware, or we sometimes underestimate how aware kids are. Those of you who have a lot of teaching experience and so forth are more sensitive to that, I think, than a lot of other people are. And so what the teachers say. So this one says, hey, this is great. So this is, um, something, a comment that she gave us. The program, not, it's not just about the money, but it introduces skills to save money and make responsible financial decisions. And it's, that is really the most important piece, developing the decision-making skills, not just the dollars. And the dollars are kind of a tool to get there. And by the way, that thing on the left is, um, the mailboxes that Jenny and Lacey created to alert the kids, oh, great, there's something happening, we're coming to the classroom, you've earned some incentives, whatever. So it's a play on the you've got mail idea. This is our, was our little poster child here. But I want to talk a little bit about the evaluation highlights because it has something to do with what we generally are doing in terms of our vision. Well, I'm gonna be canceled? I'm gonna be shut down? Sorry.
It's okay, we'll get it. You just gotta touch it, there we go. All set.
So, this was a baseline survey that we did with a consultant who has a lot of experience in CSAs, has worked in the field as a researcher and so forth, funded by PAP. So we surveyed last fall, the new kindergartners and the second grade parents. There, there's two sets of parents, it's for comparison, it's not truly, you know, a gold standard comparison, but, um, so that we would have some idea where they are in terms of their knowledge, but more importantly, their attitudes, and that's what I'm gonna talk about later. So we had about a 50% response rate from both groups. So a couple of things about the families. There were a few questions about household income and assets and their situation, and about 70% of the respondents to that question, and not everybody responded to that question, make $35,000 or less. Okay? At least that's what they say. But regardless of how much they make, if you look at these figures, 72% of the kindergarten parents and 67% of the grade two parents, sometimes are often feel that they're just getting by financially. And the reason I'm highlighting this is because, going back to what are we trying to do here? So we're trying to create, um, people's sense that they can, they have some control over their fiscal and other parts of their lives. The post-secondary expectations, which could be any kind of post-secondary education, big numbers there, 93% of the kindergartners, 81% of the second graders, but if we look at the next slide, and we still have pretty high numbers on that they're actually actively thinking about saving for the future, thinking about it. But then if you, if you look at these numbers vertically, the difference between thinking about saving to actively saving to actually saving regularly. So for both groups, those numbers really drop. So, yeah, I'm thinking about saving for the future. Am I really doing it? Yes, no, whatever. Am I doing it regularly in, in whatever kind of an account? And I think that's an area that we really want to look at as we go forward. The part of the thinking is the more the kids think about this and the more engagement we have with the parents, the more we'll be able to affect those numbers so there's not such a big fall off from I'm thinking about it to I'm actually doing it. And then there was a question about, just for the kindergarten parents, did they know about My Future Accounts? And did they talk to their kids? So, this was right at the time that they were getting their accounts, so I'm not surprised that not everybody remembered that. Okay? I did want to highlight this in case anybody's missed the fact that, starting on June 21st, one of our new initiatives, Alexa Morrison, one of our board members, has really been the driver on it, a repeat and an expansion of a money camp, this time in person, at, at the high school, um, with some, uh, school system teachers. It's free, it's online, there's still room to register, you can register by the 18th. I have a few flyers if anybody wants one. But, we're getting better registration on the younger kids, not surprisingly, than we are the older kids. So, but it's still an option and it, we got pretty good reviews from our little pilot last year. Okay? So what's coming up is our third wave of kindergartners next fall, our second wave for the evaluation. And one of the things that we hope we'll be able to fold into, we're figuring this out now, whether or not we'll be able to do some comparison between our kids in terms of competencies for Ks and Ones, uh, state level, state kinds of competencies versus kids preceding them who didn't have this post. So we're not sure we're gonna be able to do that yet, but if we can, it would be great to add that into the evaluation. And of course, we will, we will still be following the parents, who will be grade three parents now and then the new Ks. In October, we already have scheduled a workshop for all parents on college five K line accounts. And then, over the course of the year, we're also in the process of planning some new activities primarily for the older students. So we feel we kind of know what we're doing with the older ones, but we need to figure out to do more with all the older students, an additional workshops. Let's see. I think that's, yeah, so this is just how to get hold of this. This is one of our kids from the camps, but. Thank you, Family Futures. So, if you have thoughts, questions, now or later, please ask.
Questions, anybody? I was, I was wondering about the, so camp, camp didn't happen last year, I would assume, because of COVID, probably? No, no, the, the summer, summer money camp idea, so.
Oh, that's a good actually.
So, so was it, it was online?
Yeah, it was only online live.
Two years ago, it was on, on the campus, right?
We didn't have it.
No?
Last summer was our first summer.
Last summer was our first summer. So my grandson attended something two years ago that was on campus here, that was a money camp kind of thing that was through the same, wasn't the same?
You sure it was two years ago?
Pretty sure it was. Because I remember he came back, he wanted copies of my, my W-2 and so he could see, yeah.
Are you sure that's what he?
And my 401K. He wanted to see how the investments were panning out.
Good for him.
Yeah, it was a wonderful thing that, for him to start thinking about, you know, what happens when you take a little bit now and what's it worth when I'm 60 years old, that kind of thing, so.
Yeah.
But this, this one that you're talking about, this free money camp for this summer is online.
Last summer was online.
Last summer was online.
This summer it's here at the high school.
It's here. Good.
And what is the curriculum for that camp? Is it one that you've purchased a curriculum or is it being developed by the teachers?
No, it's, I'm sorry. It's a purchase curriculum. The middle school one is pretty much like the one last summer. And then the one for the 9th, 10th, and 11th graders is from the same organization. So that curriculum, both of those curriculums are recognized by a whole bunch of states in terms of meeting whatever the state requirements are. So that's.
For the graduation requirement that we have in personal finance. Right. So it goes towards.
Well, I don't know if they actually get credit for the personal finance, but they're recognized as.
As sort of benefiting.
It's an alignment. Yeah, it's alignment for.
Yeah, that's the right word.
Yeah. So it's aligned directly to our EPF, Economic Personal Finance Graduation Requirement. So it's great preparatory curriculum for that.
So one of the things actually about the content for the older students is the way we're thinking about it is it kind of preps them for the required course. It also potentially will prep them for some of the other things we have in mind, if we could actually pull that stuff off, get it organized for the fall.
Yeah.
For the older students.
I know that the teachers will be good at making it an active camp, not just a sitting there at the books kind of camp.
Yeah, we actually have deliberately.
I think that would be.
Deliberately built in some activity moving around.
Yeah, like physical activity too, which will be great.
Yeah.
And just to be clear, this is this 29,880. That's what has been used already in two years.
Right.
Invested into these funds. And that's not public money. It's private money being invested.
It's all private money.
And just an amazing.
Almost all of that money is from Headwaters.
Right. But it's an amazing, amazing contribution to our students' lives.
It is. We have another foundation that's basically supporting our part of Jenny's position. And they also have, some of their other funds reuse for some of these other activities as well. But Headwaters has put up the seed money and the incentive money.
Yeah. It's a great impact. So just like Commit to be Fit changed the culture here.
Exactly.
This is similarly is having a grasp on changing our culture, philosophy of how to think about and be involved with money.
Yeah, it's a very, it's a different kind of involvement than I think most people have.
Right.
But in terms of changing the culture, it's also trying to get a shift for those kids and families, as I said before, to really think about the future and to think that a decision I make today will make a difference in my future. And of course, it's hard to get younger people in particular to think very far ahead. But I keep thinking about the kid who has a pair of young kids, one's a kindergartner and one's a first grader in the same family, who basically the mother says they want to buy a house together. But this is the part I find really interesting, is they say they want to save their toys so they don't have to buy new toys when they have children. So obviously, that's going to change, right? But still, they're thinking about the future.
They're thinking about, right. It's great. It's a great program.
But to get the families also, and this is the much tougher challenge, to get the families to also be thinking about the future and the fact that they can take control. So they're not, you know, at the mercy of predatory lenders or misuse of credit cards or whatever it is.
Wonderful program. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Good? Thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda is the federal program applications. So definitely not as scintillating as that presentation, but these are our annual applications that are due every year. Our Title I application, of course, serves our at-risk students in literacy and math. Many of those funds support our reading specialist position, as well as certain paraprofessionals in the district. Our Title II application supports your professional development for teachers and staff and licensure and HR. Title III supports your English language learners. And Title IV is a grant that we use for specialized services, especially surrounding mental health services. So those applications are there for review and also approval so we can send them off to be sure we secure our allocation from the federal government. Thank you.
That is the singular motion or action item of this evening is to pass these.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. 4.3 is a calendar update or the fallback to school plans. If you recall, I want to say when we approved the calendar back in February or March meeting, you directed a committee to explore the option of continuing with a Wednesday Distance Learning/Enrichment Day. So Carol Johnson headed up that committee, and she sent me her PowerPoint, and she is at the beach this week. So I guess we'll let her do that. So I'll walk you through the process and where they ended up with their conclusion on this. Let's see if I can get this to work. There we go. So update, come on, there it is. So the background, oh, it was February. So the consideration for Wellness Wednesdays to continue Distance Learning Day with other areas of support. We were a little bit concerned about the transition from hybrid to a full day schedule. When we switched to four day, though, that seemed to go pretty smoothly for most of our kids. We were worried about tier three remediation and being able to have the blocks of time we need to address significant learning gaps with kids who we weren't able to see in person all of the time. We found some really great practices through our wonderful Wednesday program and other support systems that we were hoping to continue in some respect. Additional opportunities, fine arts enrichment, social emotional learning opportunities, athletics, Commit to be Fit, extra planning for elementary school teachers, distance learning instruction, so all of these things, lots to consider. So what they did was formed a study group to plan the feasibility of what that might look like if we were to provide a Distance Learning Wellness Wednesday option. But from the beginning, there was always going to be five-day in-person option for all students. So it was never to take that away. It was if there was an option for, you know, students in good standing to have a Distance Learning Day on Wednesdays, what could the day be structured like so that we could support more remedial services as well as social emotional supports and enrichment activities? So it was that notion. So this is the June meeting. So it's the timeline that we established at the beginning. The team consisted of a variety of stakeholders led by Carol Johnson, and they're all listed there so you can see from a variety of different areas. They met five times between February and April 13th, and they did a lot of surveying and talking to other stakeholder groups. They definitely wanted to, variety of options for continuing were discussed for consideration. So maintaining the way we did it when we switched to four day, keeping Wednesday as a Distance Learning Day option, understanding that anyone who wanted to come in could. Bringing all students into school, adjusting the schedule every Wednesday to incorporate Wellness Wednesday activities, maybe a camp, half-day academics, and then Wonderful Wednesday activities in the school. Allowing students in good academic standing to do distance learning, requiring the rest of the students to come into school in person. Where they ended up after talking to everybody, doing multiple surveys, looking at the research, was that equity and opportunities was absolutely essential for all students and the best option for Wednesdays. The majority of the team agreed that it was essential to get students back in school five days a week because of the academic gaps that they were seeing in the students. And they needed, from the instructional standpoint, to see all the students. They concurred that every student must be in school on Wednesdays next year to make sure that we have solid academic time along with enrichment opportunities as well. So every teacher should be in school on Wednesdays. And that's where they came to consensus. They again surveyed staff and talked to a lot of those groups. And when they saw the options about, you know, when you have to function in person and distance, it's not the same as last year. So the inner workings of logistics for planning for your staffing become pretty cumbersome and equitable if you don't have a good rotating system to address all your learning needs. So 60% of the RCES staff voted for Wednesdays to be a regular school day, just keep it the same, just regular. 31% of RCES teachers supported some type of modified Wellness Wednesday activity one time a month. So change up the schedule one time a month to incorporate some of these activities that we found to be beneficial. RCHS staff wanted to maybe do a separate plan for just high school, having two Wellness Wednesdays a month with one Wednesday remote learning and one for camp remediation, remote learning as an option, career exploration. So there's a lot more that they could build in. But after they considered all these things, they recommended that both schools should be on the same schedule because that creates a lot of disjointed logistical planning for parents and childcare. So the team agreed to offer. What they would like to do then is have a club-like format at the end of the day for one Wellness Wednesday a month. And you'll have a Wellness Wednesday day where academics are still taught in a modified schedule for something like clubs, additional SEL, social emotional learning supports, enrichment activities through partnerships with a variety of partners, agencies like we have going on right now, where we have enrichment camps with RAC and working with Headwaters and maybe local artists and all of those things to enrich that Wellness Wednesday each month. And then RCHS wanted to utilize that time for pride clubs and enhancing that model because it was kind of disjointed this year with COVID and remote and adjusting schedules and then the need for making up a lot of the in-person time. So they'd like to really enhance the club model and also allow more of that counselor and peer mentor relationship that we saw that was so beneficial this year with peer counselors and club leaders from the high school helping with elementary clubs too. So those opportunities incorporated into one time a month is what they wanted to do, but it would still be a five-day in-person model. So the calendar does not need to change at all. The final thought, though, something that really shifted the team's planning was the Senate Bill 1303 that was enacted. And I did link it on that so you can go and read it in March. So that requires every local school board to make sure that in-person learning is offered to every parent and for every student whose parents want them in school. Initially, it said virtual too, but that language was modified. Not as to say that students would not be able to access virtual learning, remote learning with specific criteria, but they would have to contact their school's principal to work out the remote learning options. It's still a requirement that all teachers will have to employ some blended learning. So we are keeping our distance learning model with a framework, understanding that we may have to close down again if there's a spike or something like that. So we have plans in place and we have curriculum leaders at each grade level to maintain our campus. And teachers are still trained in Google to make sure they're still interacting with students online. So we keep up on those skills. So that's required. BDOE did say that the distance learning option as it was before would not be recognized as in-person seat time hours. So when you take out those days, it wouldn't have worked for our accreditation standards. So that kind of took that off the table. So that's where the team ended up. You have questions, concerns?
I was wondering about, so this once a month, I mean, I don't, I'm curious about the timeframe. I mean, how can, how can that be a meaningful thing once a month? You know, a club that meets once a month at the end of school. I'm curious, how much time will be blocked into it? Is it sort of workshops? Or is it, I mean, I know that this is early in the planning stage that it'll be planned. But I would really like it to not be just a thing where people kind of walk out of school early and don't have to do something. But where it's an enrichment thing, where people maybe are exposed to something interesting and different or where they really have a true.
So the model we'd like to use is incorporating the Wellness Wednesday activities that happened at that camp that were so enriching for everybody.
Yeah.
Except not happening off-campus, it would happen here. So you would have similar activities that have already proven to be successful, and enhancing those things.
Right.
So we have a model to work from. We did it all year this year. We're doing it now with summer school with Terrific Thursdays and a lot of fun activities. It's just going to make it work in the physical space. And there may be field trips that we're taking and things like that.
For like performance of some kind or, you know, it's all kinds.
Absolutely. There's tons of opportunity to do that. But when we have a designated day, where we know that day is when we have some specialized programming and we modify schedules to support those things, and then we have more flexibility. I just, we didn't want it to be arbitrary and just kind of pigeonholing certain organizations into specialized activities because then it's just one-off activities throughout the year. So if we really enrich that one day and knowing, which the curriculum is going to be enriched all year long through a lot of the supports we're putting in. And of course, the seminar period is still going to be available at the high school to do some continued career exploration and using major clarity and SEL supports and things like that. So, yeah.
So in essence, it would be a half-day, probably.
That's what I was going to ask. Is it like a one to three? Because you have to take care of lunch, right? So you take care of lunch.
For 500 kids.
It just depends. A lot of it's going to depend because right now, during the summer, we're analyzing a lot of the data to see where our needs are, what gaps we have to address, and our social emotional needs too. So putting all that, those puzzle pieces together will take more time this summer. So the structure of that Wellness Wednesday day will be available at a later time when we have all the logistics planned out. But knowing that we have a special day where we can do Commit to be Fit activities or have artists come in and work on artistic expression or performing arts or, you know, those things, we can have a rotating schedule and be able to address those things. So we are going to need the support of our organizations and those representatives who are on this team who are pretty committed to helping us make sure we could have those enrichment activities.
And would flex time also still be included in the high school schedule?
Seminar time.
Seminar time now, it's called seminar time.
Yes.
Okay, that's.
Yes.
Okay. Well, that's, we'll see. I know it's still being.
It's early, but.
But if it can be a significant thing, and since you have built, you have had some good experiences through the Wednesday camp and other activities, I think it's good to not lose that good stuff.
Yeah.
Thanks for looking at that.
Yeah, we want to build on what works. And if you have some ideas for that, feel free to share them. That's great.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, so that calendar remains in place and five years of.
Let me ask you one other question?
Yep.
As I'm thinking about this. The organization of this is going to be horrendous. I mean, it's going to be a lot of work. Are we thinking about a stipend for folks to put Wednesdays together for the elementary?
Yes, exactly.
And what's that do to our dollar, I guess?
Well, and this is a perfect use for some of those federal funds, S R 2 and S R 3. So we have plenty of funding to support that work with curriculum writing, especially addressing learning laws and social emotional supports. There's a whole category in that federal grant just for that. So the federal grant will pay for all of that.
For that.
Yeah. And even materials and specialized assemblies or whatever we want to do. I mean, we do have funding to support some of that. So, yeah.
If people are not, if there's not a coordinator, it doesn't happen.
Yeah.
Okay. Good point. Good point.
Yeah, that's a good point. Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. And then 4.4, we have loaded up the May policy updates for your review for adoption at the July meeting. You need a 30-day review of those policies. The red lines for those documents are available to show the differences in the language changes and things. Most of them were pretty minor as, I know there was some confusion about the release of some standalone model policies for transgender students that was released by the Virginia Department of Education. Those were not from the Virginia School Board Association who essentially writes policy that we generally adopt because it's vetted through their legal team and that's who we pay dues for to make sure we're covered under those policies. So I know there was some confusion about that. These policy updates haven't really changed much of that. And in fact, BSBA sent with the May policies a statement about that they did not draft a standalone policy addressing treatment of transgender students. The legal requirement in Virginia Code 22.1-23.3 are met by several policies which address the eight components that are in the statute in the Code of Virginia that was actually enacted last summer. So it's over a year old and BSBA had already made their language more inclusive, especially in their non-discrimination policies. And those are all listed too for how they cover that. So my recommendation would be to stay with BSBA at this time and with their legal expertise on covering those components until we, you know, learn more from what's going on.
And we've been using it for over a year.
For over a year, yeah.
And it's been effective in managing the system.
It has been. It has been, yeah. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to field those, but as you see, I mean, the non-discrimination policy, for instance, the only change that, from last August, was they changed disability status as a veteran to military status. So that was the major change, and then they added some code language here, so all the red lines are there, you can see where the underlying changes were made. So for us, no major changes, we're still running under the same policy we have since last August when the law changed and we've been, yeah, covered.
Right, any questions?
Okay. And that concludes my reports.
Thank you, Dr. Grinsley.
You're welcome.
Moving on to reports of the Headwaters representative.
All right, just a moment. All right, I have a report from Headwaters. First is Summer Chorus, they have 25 enrollees, and it's going to be happening this coming, this month, starting June 21st. It'll finish July 2nd, and, and the concert is going to be on the 2nd of July at 7:00, and we still don't know where, but I'm sure that we'll get that information before July 2nd. And also, there's a question of how many people with COVID restrictions we will be able to have there, but it's exciting and well-enrolled. Headwaters is going to be hiring a new deputy director for programs, who's going to be responsible for supervising the administration and the operation of the education and enrichment programs, the physical programming that they do. It's grown, and Headwaters has grown and responded to needs in the community, for example, scholarships, the after-school programs, Starfish, supporting the Agriculture and Health Science Academy programs, and also fielding some additional programs as well. So the workload has increased, and we need, they need more SNAP staff, which is a good, a good thing, they're helping us more and more. And so this week, there'll be interviews for that position, and it will work directly with school staff and personnel and oversee the program directors for the various programs. And I, we're, many of us were at graduation, and there were $106,000 in scholarships from Headwaters given this year, which is a giant number, it's colossal, and we've, it's amazing for, for our students to go out with, with that much in their pockets and ready for their education. And then after-school is, plans for after-school, again, is, are coming back. There's a meeting coming up this coming month to get after-school underway, so that's what I have from Headwaters, thank you.
Thank you very much. So the, the chorus performance is scheduled for July the 2nd, 7:00 p.m., we don't know where yet.
Don't know where, yeah.
But that's going to, that information will need to get out before we're together.
Yeah, because it's before our next meeting, so.
So hopefully, there'll be a way of getting that out.
So you can put something out to everybody, right?
We will, yeah.
Make sure it gets out. Great. All right, MBGS.
We have, we're meeting this coming Thursday, so I, I can't tell you what we're going to talk about, so.
You don't, you can't do that?
I don't know.
You do figure it out.
It is our, it is our opening meeting for the year, so we will be electing a chair and a vice chair and all that stuff. It's more of a business meeting and recognizing the budget.
Great.
Which appears to be pretty solid right now.
All right, moving on to public comment, is there anyone that'd like to address the board this evening? One?
Yes.
Lenny, do you know, Stonewall Hawthorne, I always forget that. Anyways, I just wanted to say thank you so much to those who put in so much time looking over the wonderful Wednesday proposals. I'm really excited for that option to be there and do hope that maybe we could even increase it to two times a month or something like that, to give people an option. I know Headwaters has decided to go, and I know the kids are excited, and I think that we've gotten some really good things that have come out of the silver linings of COVID. I also wanted to say the Summer Chorus will be happening, the concert will be on July 2nd that evening, we just aren't sure the venue, and if it's a small venue, it sometimes is tight, and so we have to be sometimes somewhat limited, but we will try to share with as many public officials as we can. We have 25 students enrolled, which we're really excited, so if they bring four, four parents each, that's 100 people, and I know the COVID limitations have decreased, but we have to check our venues, and we're working on that, but we'll try to get you a personal invite.
That'd be great.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
High school also?
Yes.
Fly-by cleaning there. Gary Aitchell Hampton, just to follow up on Lenny, we have three venues under, under consideration. One is, if it's a really hot month, you never know, and we've had people complain it was too hot, so we look for an air-conditioned venue, this could be one of them. The Small Theater or The Theater at Castleton would be our first choice, we think that Castleton will allow it, but then we were waiting on these changing rules about how many people indoors. Right now, it looks great, they concede about 150, it's, it's a beautiful facility, we've sung there twice, so we'd really like to go back if we can, but we're not in control of our destiny on this, we're all hoping that COVID is now in the rearview mirror and it won't be a consideration. If spacing either of the choral, the singers, or the audience becomes an issue, a venue is the Avon Hall Hill. That one's got some logistical issues, it's outdoor, you got rain, you got heat, but we, we are seriously prepping three different alternatives, and I would hope that within a week or two, you'll have an answer, and we'll get the amazing PR system that is Holly Jenkins on it, and everyone will find out. So that's the, the follow-up on the course, but we're very pleased we could even see, if history repeats, we'll have a few late walk-ins, late registration, we could be between 28 and 30 singers. And the change for this year is we've not repeated the lower division, so these are all middle and high school kids, so we're actually picking up a significant number increase in the middle and upper school singers. We also are seeing a fair amount of returning kids, so that the goal of building up a kind of a program seems to be working even though we didn't have it last year with, we were worried at having to suspend it last year, whether that would break the momentum. Looks like we're going to have a really good summer, of course, so that's great. It's also possible that on these Wednesdays, I'm not sure we could get either, well, one of the directors for the Summer Chorus is your own band director, so there's continuity there. I have some influence with the accompanist, so it's possible that you could have a standalone Wednesday session where they're shown a new piece of music, they rehearse it, and they can perform it.
Yeah.
So there's, I would also endorse the idea that the, I would like to see it twice a month, but I understand the logistics, but there's so much good that came out of some of the alternative programming that happened because of COVID, it'd be nice to be able to continue that. Another plug for Family Futures, just to sort of amplify something Ann said, Headwaters is very proud and pleased to support their activities. We do not see it primarily because of dollars, we have some dollars, we're happy to make that available, but we see it as a modality and as part of a comprehensive shift, maybe, in Headwaters' approach. Profile of a Graduate Life Ready Learning means from K to 12, anything we can do to help that program, Profile of a Graduate, where kids are better prepared, you know, loading their knapsack for life so that when they leave, they're really ready to move on with the rest of their life. So we're going to be rolling out, the board approved this past Monday night, it will be formal this Monday, but the executive committee's approved it, there's going to be three now streams. We'll support financially dual enrollment students, we'll support people working workforce certification criteria, and there's going to be a new program called Student Enrichment Grants, which mean within a certain, there'll be guidelines, but any student who has an idea of how their life, their education would be enriched beyond what the school curriculum can offer, could write their own kind of grant application, whether it's a guitar lesson, whether it's a trip to the Grand Canyon, whether it's hen gliding, I don't know what it might be, but anything that we think would, would fit one of the five Cs for the profile of a graduate that is outside the existing curriculum, we want to create a program so kids can approach us and say, will you help me? Now, we don't expect these to be, trips to Europe are out, but within a certain range of maybe $500 to $1,500 per student, and they won't be endless, we can't do it for every kid, but we'd like to sort of enrich those special opportunities for kids that we're doing a great job, but we can't be everything to everybody in the public school system. But if you attend Rapid Hanukkah, especially high school, we'd like to think if there's something that would really enrich your life while you're in high school, and it's not part of the existing curriculum, can we help make that happen? And we hope to collaborate with RAC and several other organizations as we move forward. But that's kind of where we're headed this summer. We hope to be working closely with the superintendent and staff on after-school, which we hope will be expanded to four days. Going to reboot the REED program, Starfish is already growing, so we just really hope COVID's behind us, get to August and start a really strong school year, but thank you for your support, and we think there's some really exciting things happening at school.
Student, student enrichment grant, fascinating, good.
In parallels, we already have the educational enrichment grant for your teachers.
Right.
Where they can come to us and say, we want to do something special that's not really in the budget, can you, can you kind of prime the pump for us? And we have, and they've been very successful. This is the parallel for individual students.
That's great. I don't know where you come up with all these ideas, right? What does that happen, what forum does that happen in?
Kids.
The kids.
Your superintendent will tell you that they're out there thinking all the time, and there's more of them than there are of us.
Oh, yeah, they outnumber.
So when you have a kid that sends you an email and saying, I'm interested in this thing, and I don't know how to make it happen, but somebody said Headwaters helps, can you help? We try, and so those things then cause our board members to start thinking and our executive and our staff, how can we make these things happen? So we're going to try a pilot program, we think it will work, we hope.
That's great.
Then we'll ask the community for more money, and that's where it really hits. I mean, if the community were not so generous, we couldn't do the scholarships, we couldn't do these programs. So it is, it's a community, you know, we work together on these things.
Thank you, Gary. Is there anyone else this evening? All right, moving on to action items, is there a motion to approve the federal program applications, Title 1, 2, 3, and 4?
To move.
We have a motion for Mr. Grove, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Meyer. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? Mr. Water, is there any new business? I would like to say graduation was a blast, and for the first time in a really long time, I mean, that gymnasium was packed, and it was a great thing for our community, and so well done, and appreciative of everybody that pitched in to make that happen. I know we had changes at the last minute that changed everything, and it was just handled really well, and it was a great, it was a great feeling to have the community together for that, and hopefully the students.
I want to thank the community as well for, for following the rules and doing what we had to do to make it a safe event. It was really good to see four, 500 people all doing the right thing.
I know, together, I know.
It was uplifting, it was really, made you feel like, we're just doing it, and we're, it just, I felt so happy for days, I mean, I still, I feel happy since then, I just feel like it's really, makes me optimistic about our future, just every individual, every speech, every piece of it, really impressive.
Yeah, it was wonderful, and, and thanks to everybody for what you did to pull that off. Our next scheduled board meeting is July the 13th at 6:00 p.m., the same location. At this time, I entertain a motion to go into closed session.
I move the board convening to closed session for following purpose, discuss and consider the appointment of staff for professional physicians, classified physicians, coaching physicians, and resignation of professional physicians pursuant to Code, Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711A1.
Oh, motion, Mr. Grove, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Uben, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? So we're going to proceed to the library for a closed session, we'll be back in?
10 minutes.
10 minutes, and we will take motions related to personnel when we get back, and then we will adjourn. If you want to wait, we'll be back in 10 minutes. If not, we will not be certified, there are only things related to the motion we're discussing in closed session. Mr. Uben?
William Uben certifies.
Larry Grove certifies.
Rachel Bynum certifies.
Westy Mel certifies.
Lucy Anne Meyer certifies.
We did hear a personnel report for new physicians, quite, quite a long list, I don't know if we want to go through that, we don't want to go through the whole list, I don't know if you want to hit any highlights?
We have hired our high school English teacher, we have hired for our math specialist position, which actually, we're expanding our STEAM coordinator, Bethany Bostick, is also going to be our math specialist, so she'll combine that, and of course, our fall slate of coaches, and paraprofessionals were on there, elementary teachers, I believe, I don't have it in front of me.
It's, it's an extensive list, and we can get a, we can get a copy of it if anyone's ever.
It'll be loaded after tonight, so you'll be able to see everybody.
Is there a motion this evening that we accept the personnel report as provided to us?
To move.
We have a motion, Mr. Uben, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Grove, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? Motion carries, is there a motion to adjourn?
Sir?
We have a motion, Mr. Uben, is there a second? Second, Ms. Bynum, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no?
Did you see?
Meeting is adjourned, thank you for coming.